Folks, we will call to order the December 7th meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. Before we get into our regular agenda, I wanted to express our thanks to Gordon Goss, even though he's not here this evening, for his years of service on the planning commission. Particularly these last four years as a city commission representative to the planning commission. And would like to welcome this evening Mary Roberts, who is the newly appointed city representative to the planning commission. Mary, thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Thanks. If we can have a roll call.
Yep. Jacobitz.
Present.
Love, here, Weatherby.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Watson.
Brother.
Taylor.
Present.
Cotton is not here. Roberts.
Present.
All commission members, Mias Cotton are present.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is consideration of the minutes from our November 2nd meeting. Commissioners, I presume you've had an opportunity to review those minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the November meeting minutes? Hearing none, we would entertain a motion for their approval.
Who approval is written?
Support. We have a motion from Taylor and support from Love. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? November minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda is consideration of our meeting schedule for 2022. Staff provided that. I think that, as you know, traditionally, we meet on the first Tuesday of every month. I believe there were three occurrences. I had missed the January one. But three occurrences where we would meet on the second Tuesday of the month, that being January, July, and September. Is there any discussion of the proposed meeting schedule for the coming year?
Move to approve.
I would, I would offer only that I know that myself and Commissioner Weatherby will not be at the March meeting. Mr. Watson, are you available to chair that?
Well, it's a long way away, but yes.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what I'm doing tomorrow.
Okay. And generally, can we be assured of a quorum probably then at the March meeting, folks? Well, that, yeah, yeah. Okay. Given, given those, we have a motion from Commissioner Watson, I believe, to approve the meeting schedule. Is there support?
Support.
Commissioner Johnson, thank you. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, case number 21044, a rezoning request for 922 Addison Street. We'll hear first from the petitioner, Dr. Johnson. Nice to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Here. And ever hear from them as to the justification for their request. Will review any written or phone comments that we've received from the public. We'll hear any comments from public that are here present tonight. We'll give consideration to any comments from the city's planning staff. Once we've heard and considered the evidence, the commission may decide to render a recommendation this evening. Any action that we take is in the form of a recommendation to the city commission, because they're the ones with the authority to actually change the ordinance in that regard. Things that we need to consider when considering a change in zoning is what identifiable conditions related to the application have changed and would therefore justify the proposed change in zoning. Are there any precedents that would be created by either approving or denying this petition? And what are the possible effects of these precedents? What is the impact on the ability of the city and other governmental units to provide adequate public services and facilities that might be reasonably required in the future if this request is granted? Does a request to change negatively affect any environmental conditions or the value of surrounding properties? And what is the ability of the property in question to be put to a reasonable economic use as it is presently zoned? Those are the criteria that we need to consider. With that said, Mr. Johnson, Dr. Johnson, excuse me, if, tell us what it is you're, you're asking for and why that is.
Thank you and good evening. Sister Peg and the university community wishes me to express season's greetings to all of you. As was mentioned, the business tonight for you to consider is the rezoning of 922 Addison. It's a property that the university picked up recently, I believe it was within the last couple of years that we purchased this property. And to the east as well as to the south is contiguous to the university's land, which is already zoned ERO. Our purpose for requesting the ERO is to, is that our campus master plan, our entire property is all configured ERO, and so we desire for this particular property to match those other designations. For the present time, it does back up to the east is our softball field as well as vacant land to the south of it. We don't really have any immediate plans for that particular piece of property. It is a, there is a house that is present, but we have not been running that or nor using it for anything. And I'm anticipating that eventually it'll probably be torn down. But we want to be a good neighbor, and we also want to make sure that our campus master plan, when necessary, we can move forward on, on transactions. And so it makes sense at this point in time to make this request. So then, case in the future, we've already designated the property in a manner that the university would use it accordingly and within the zoning privileges that the city provides. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for Dr. Johnson? Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Did we, staff, did we receive any written or phone comments on this request?
No, we did not.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on this particular matter? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing portion of this consideration and go to commissioner discussion. This one seems pretty straightforward. It's adjacent to property that is already zoned ERO.
Weren't there several other pieces that were, when we first got our?
They, they weren't adjacent, and so they were going to end up being spot zones.
Okay, okay, good. There, there was one other one.
Yeah. Okay. What identifiable conditions related to the application of change, which would justify the proposed amendment? The college owns it now, and it is adjacent to other properties that is zoned ERO. Are there any precedents in possible effects of such precedent which result from the approval or denial of this petition? I, I certainly, staff nor I would anticipate any negative effects from this change in zoning. Does it have any adverse, firstly, does it adversely affect any environmental conditions or the value of surrounding properties? Again, there's ERO properties and university properties adjacent to the surrounding properties ready. I don't see that this would make any change. And what is the ability of the property in question to be put to a reasonable economic use as it's currently zoned? Well, there is a home on it. It has potential for resale, however, it currently hasn't been rented, and it could probably be used just as well as college property as it could as rental property. So based on a review, if finding the facts, we believe that the, that we could, if we so chose, recommended the city commission this change in zoning from R4, single-family residential to ERO, educational research and office district. Unless there's any additional discussion, I would entertain a motion to that effect.
Move to approve.
Support.
Commissioner Love and Commissioner Watson, is there any additional discussion? Again, this action is in the form of a recommendation to the city commission for change in zoning from R4 to ERO. If we could have a roll call, both.
Yep. Roberts.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Weatherby.
Support.
Johnson.
Support.
Taylor.
Support.
Jacobitz.
Yes.
Love.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Next item on our agenda is case 21045, the Adrian College Gateway off from 223. Folks, I would note, I'm a little, we may, we may turn to staff here for an explanation of this. I would, I would note that we reviewed this as a site plan and approved this site plan pretty much as, as currently sits in September of 2019. So if nothing else, it's been more than a year since we approved it, and it's not quite done yet. But if staff wishes to comment on this as to why this was before.
Yeah, so conditions have changed. So two things about that earlier action. In 2019, it was predicated upon an ordinance amendment that would have allowed such structures, which was never passed. You might be surprised to know, but city commission never passed that ordinance, and that.
They didn't vote on it.
The, I was about to add, the prior administrator did not put it in front of the city commission. It became, as it relates to this particular item, a moot point at the point where this property was dedicated as public right of way. Now that it's public right of way, there would not be a site plan procedure in, in, that would be applicable to approving improvements that are in the public's, in the public right of way. The zoning ordinance relates to land that is private property or outside of the, the rights of way of, of streets of the city. So, given that it is now in the public right of way, the procedure for approving it is a right of way permit, which in this case, given the nature of the improvements requested, will go to the city commission. The Planning and Enabling Act provides a little-known provision that Jeremy quoted for you in, in his memo. I happen to know this provision because I once brought a lawsuit based on it, but, but it, you know, he's correct in his memo that when there's a, a public improvement on public property, above-ground improvement on public property, that is in an area that is covered by your master plan, which this area is, that those are all supposed to be reviewed by the planning commission before they are approved by the city commission. And so you, this is again, an, an item that you're taking action in the form of a recommendation to the city commission, and then we would anticipate that it would be on probably the next city commission agenda for consideration of the, of approval to construct the structure in the public right of way.
So is this a site plan or is this a?
It's not, it's neither. It's not a site, it's not anything you normally see. It, it is review pursuant to the statute of an improvement in the public right of way.
I'm somewhat concerned and confused that our recommendation for the change in the ordinance that would permit the archway never went to the city. I realize it's before your time, Greg, but, but where does that leave us?
Well, as it relates to this particular item, it, like I say, it's a moot point because it wouldn't have, the site plan that was approved would have expired long ago.
This property has moved from private property to city property.
Right. Okay, okay, okay.
I asked the same question.
So the ordinance, so.
Zoning only applies to private property.
Property, private property. Okay.
Would you recommend, in light of the facts, as Jeremy laid them out in his memo, which, and, and as the applicant will explain when they get up and do their presentation, which is that they would propose to entirely pay for this and provide for its maintenance going forward? Would you recommend that the city commission allow this improvement in the, on a, on a public space?
Mr. Hess, I presume that you are the representative of this project?
Jason Hess with Krieghoff Landway, representing Adrian College on this matter. As Mr. Jacobitz said, it was present, the project is essentially the same as it was presented in September of 19.
19, 2019.
2019. The project did get split into a couple of phases with the gateway walls going up first, as you have all seen going by there. And then the arch itself is now fully funded as far as the college is concerned. So they would like to proceed with installing the arch as well as the gateway walls to finish off that project. Like you, I learned a lot more tonight about what we're actually here to do. Questions for me?
The, you know.
Did I correctly state your, sorry, Mr. Jeff, if I could. Did I correctly state your intentions as it relates to the maintenance and of the structure going forward of the college's intentions?
Correct. I believe the college provided a maintenance agreement to the city for review.
And, and we have a written, proposed written agreement for maintenance of this, of the.
Correct. What, yeah, staff's still reviewing it, but before it would go to the city commission, that would be in the form that would be recommended for approval.
I don't have, I, I have both the this diagram and the color ones that you've provided. I don't have the ones that we originally looked at back in September of 2019.
So the difference between these, and I know you and Nancy have the large ones, they did remove the walk-through gates as I requested. So these two that you saw do have those, the new sets do not.
Okay.
So they will not be closed off as they were in 2019.
Understood. That was a request we'd made back then or concern we had back then, the gates over the sidewalks. My question was more about landscaping, is that I don't see that we have a landscape plan. Is there a landscape plan at the moment? It's all just bare earth.
The college has intentions of landscaping that they're waiting for the arch to be completed, to finalize.
Will there, Jason, help me out here, because I, I'm looking at this diagram.
Yes.
Here, which is, I realize, just an artist's running, not a formal blueprint. But are there not service doors, like garage doors on the back of the ice arena? And I don't see any access, maybe I'm mistaken, but I don't see any access to those.
There isn't right now.
There.
There is bare earth, and you can just drive over.
No, it goes around the building.
Yeah.
There's a service drive that comes in off from the boulevard that goes into the back of the, the service area of the ice arena.
Which, which isn't showing on here. Correct. Okay, is that already, already existing? Oh, okay, okay, okay. Apparently here. Like that. Okay.
I will add that they, the college did plant some additional trees along the boulevard last week, I believe. That's outside of my scope or as part of this project.
Okay.
They're continuous landscape improvements.
Any other questions for Mr. Hess?
There's a lot of earth moving going. There's a lot of earth moving going on right there now. Is that part of this project? Is that for the?
It is not. I can fill you on what they're doing, though. They're, they're just creating an aesthetic barrier for the back of that ice arena that Mr. Jacobitz was just talking about.
So you don't see all utilities there?
Correct.
Okay. Good.
In the roundabout on the diagram is another, I don't know what you want to call it. Is that? That's not existing now, correct?
That got removed from the project. That's.
That's removed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not gonna happen.
Know this. That thing there.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on this particular project? I presume that because of the unusual nature of this, this wasn't a public, publicly noticed activity.
Correct. It's not a public year.
Okay. Um. If there's no additional discussion, any action we would take would be in the form of a recommendation to the city commission. And we would entertain a motion if, if you so choo, if anyone so chooses to recommend to them approval of this project as presented.
So move.
Watson. Support. Taylor. Any additional discussion?
Could you restate the motion in full language?
Okay. This is a recommendation to the city commission to approve the right-of-way project for the Adrian College.
We're not really approving it.
We're approving the recommend.
Recommending.
Yeah. Recommending to the city commission that they approve this, the gateway project for Adrian College as presented.
Is, are we approving a right-of-way, ask them to approve a right-of-way permit, correct?
Yes.
That's what.
Yes, that is correct.
Then that's their process, the, what the statute would refer to as improvements within the public right of way.
Are we, is the secretary clear on the motion? Okay. Is there any, any additional discussion? Hearing none. A roll call, both, please.
Watson.
Approved.
Johnson.
Support.
Roberts.
Support.
Taylor. Support. Jacobitz.
Yes.
Love.
Yes.
Weatherby.
Support.
Motion passed unanimously.
Best of luck, Mr. Hess. Next item on our agenda is case 21049, a pre-application meeting for an Adrian Mall planned unit development. Our, our ordinance specifies that the developer shall meet with the city engineering department, the building inspector, and planning commission prior to submission of any preliminary development plan. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss early and informally the purpose and effect of the ordinance and criterion standards contained therein, and to familiarize the developer with the policies contained in the city's land use plan. I would add, another purpose of this review is to provide the developer with feedback as to the city's openness to the proposal, and not to let them get too far into their plans if, if we would not look favorably on such a project. With that said, is there someone here to represent that project? Sir, if you'd step to the podium and identify yourself for our records, and tell us what you'd like to tell us.
Thank you very much for having me. First of all, just to give you some of those introductions of not only myself, but the team we have here tonight. My name is Daniel Garno, and I'm a Michigan licensed general contractor for about 30 years. And I've done projects in and around the Adrian area. And also have with us the owner of the Adrian Development Group, who's currently the owner of the Adrian Mall site. And I am here in partnership with the Adrian Development Group. I have with me tonight also Pastor CJ Climber of New Life Church, who is, currently has an approval to operate on the site, although because of some of the current conditions of the property, have not been able to meet there. In addition, we've retained the Collaborative, which is a locally known and regionally renowned architect firm who is working with us on this preliminary approach. And as long as it continues that way, our intention is to continue with the collaborative based on some of the reputation and projects they've already been very successful in the area. So that's it for brief introductions. Unless there's other questions, I intend to just turn it over to the Collaborative and present some of those early designs. And we are really here to field your questions. My intention in being involved with the property is I'm born and raised in the Adrian area, as well as, for example, CJ Climber from New Life Church. Our interest is both personal and professional. We'd like to see something good being done for Adrian. We want to do it right. And we also have the full support of Isaac Catan and the Adrian Mall Development Group to see to it that that happens. So we are here to work with you and whatever is necessary to have the project come and pass. So I think unless you have other questions, I'm going to turn it over to Alyssa O'Neil from the Collaborative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was it O'Neil?
O'Neil.
Okay.
O-N-E-I-L.
Thank you.
Yes. Looking at the Adrian Mall vision, so we were tasked with really bringing their vision for the site to a site plan. So first, I'm going to walk you a little bit through the existing conditions, talk about the proposed uses that they'd like to see on the site, and then show you a site plan that's an example of the intensity that they're interested in for your feedback. So there is healthy development on the Adrian Mall site. The perimeter has a new Hampton Inn and Suites, a lot of perimeter outlots that are fast food, casual dining, there's a car wash, a bank, some strip retail on the corner, gas station. And then there's viable retail on the parcel. So there is a Dunham's, an Ali's, and a Hobby Lobby. And then there's a new Buffalo Wild Wings. Some of the things that are holding it back are the decaying indoor mall. So the actual indoor-oriented mall building having some issues with leakage and mold. So this was the parcel in 2014. So this is before Dunham's and Buffalo Wild Wings. But you get a sense of the exterior facade really turning, turning its back on the parking lot. So an indoor mall oriented towards people on the inside. But what's been successful in the past years is turning that the opposite way. So putting the storefront on the outside and having outdoor-facing retail. And that's what's been more successful for the parcel. Looking into proposed uses, so what's working? Now, perimeter outlots, the fast food, the fast casual dining, looking at really flexible uses for some of those parcels around the perimeter. And then the indoor mall concept, which isn't working for the site anymore, flipping that on its head. So new facades with articulated windows, walking from the parking lot into the retail area of the building. And then to dedicated service in a back area so that the service, the trucks are all coming to one spot. Whereas right now, your service is all the way around the perimeter with lots of little fenced-in areas. So in their mind, what's missing on the site? Multi-family residential is an option, looking at some of the perimeter uses to the north and the east. Anchor tenants, so the JCPenney is gone, Elder Beerman is gone. What are the new anchor tenants of today? So maybe, maybe self-storage, attractive self-storage, and maybe New Life Church and Community Center, which is, you know, a, a quite a vibrant use. Looking at right-scale retail, so not a lot of stores now can come in and fill 100,000 square feet. It's just not the reality. So 2,000 square foot, 5,000 square foot, much more small digestible chunks for the retailers of today. Looking at pedestrian scale amenities, so if you're walking across the site, there's really nothing for you. There's a field of parking. Used to have the pedestrians on the inside of the mall walking through those corridors. But now, thinking of some things on the outside, if we flip the stores, places for pedestrians to mingle and hang out. And then attractive signage, wayfinding, service area screening, just good design principles moving forward with new retail to make it more attractive. Again, Adrian really deserves something better. So when we talk about multi-family residential, what are we talking about? We're looking at low-rise apartments, which we think is probably the best for the market, one- and two-bedroom units, three, maybe four stories, and we're thinking a total of 200 units spread out across the site. These are, you know, park in a parking lot and walk to your residence, not attached garages. And then sort of as a, maybe an additional consideration, probably too intense for the site, but the mid-rise podium apartment, so that would have the parking garage beneath it, and then the, the residents above. Looking at exterior-oriented right-scale, again, that's smaller-scale retail. So the lifestyle centers of today have the exterior storefront, the attractive lighting, comfortable outdoor seating, places to have local art or music, bring in things like ice sculpture festivals. Really nice events can occur in these outdoor lifestyle malls. Boulevard-style drives with ample amenity space and parking. And then you could potentially have multi-family residential units, a smaller amount above the stores. Some of those pictures, see like children's playground or just nice outdoor seating. Looking at an interior-oriented self-storage facility as an anchor tenant. So that's an example of a tenant today that could actually take a large chunk of a building. These have well-lit interior areas with garage doors, and then the exterior has windows into pedestrian corridors. This example is showing three stories, but we would be inside the JCPenney, so we would be one story. But again, just, just having those glass views. Then looking at a comprehensive look for it, so as it moves. So as it moves forward, having nice signage, nice branding opportunities for the parcel, whatever the new name may be. So you're probably wondering what this looks like. So here's the existing. And here's one example of something that might be. And I'm going to show those next to each other so you can get a better sense of.
We actually have copies.
Okay.
Which are probably easier to see than the screen.
Okay. So we've got on this concept, two hundred and twelve multi-family residential units, a hundred and sixty thousand square foot of retail and dining. We asked that things like that be flexible to trade between the two uses. The New Life Worship and Community Center in blue, a hundred thousand square feet of self-storage. So that's JCPenney plus loading and sort of office space for that in the back. And then this particular example has six outlots, which could be, again, asked that they'd be flexible, over five acres and then beautification and investment in the community. It's a little bit of a before and after. So the multi-family residential up in the northeast corner. Retail on what would be a new boulevard, tearing down the part of the mall that is the worst condition. And then what this option, in order to create the outlots and have enough parking, decreases the retail. Whereas in this option, you have more retail, but it doesn't allow you to get those outlots because you need the parking to support it. And then if you have any questions, I could take you through that. We did parking calculations based on your zoning, just to show that what is on the site supports based on your existing zoning criteria.
Maybe way too much.
Tons of questions.
Yeah. I don't know if this is a question for you, Ms. O'Neil, or for Mr. Garno. Do you have, you presented two concepts. Is there a preference for one over the other?
I don't know that we would want to say there is a preference per se. I think what we were looking for is to come to you with the intent to have the flexibility that this may go one way or the other, also based on the interest in either the development on the individual pieces or purchase of the outlots. And I don't know that that's always going to be known until we start moving our way along into the project. So I think we wanted to be some level of flexibility, similar to what you might see in a planned unit development that's going to be partially dependent on the activity once we get started. So I think our intent really is to just to have the flexibility that it could go one way or the other. Now, if that's something that's a sticking point with you, then I think that that begins to develop our parameters so we know what we can and can't do with the flexibility idea.
Can you describe, you said that, you know, we're talking about a hundred and sixty to two hundred housing units and probably their apartments as opposed to condos. Can you, do you have some idea what the nature of the housing, is it going to be affordable housing? Is it going to be upscale housing? Is it going to be senior housing? Is it going to be family housing? Just.
No, those are really great questions. And I think that's going back to somewhat the flexibility issue. I think some of our initial look at data and some of the studies and some of the materials that Alyssa's had that I think we wanted to at least be of a mid-level design. We think the market is still there. I think when you start diminishing the value of the units too far, that's an area that doesn't really, in our, in our, I guess, current thinking, doesn't establish the higher quality of the site itself and the development that we're really looking for.
Yeah.
So some of that's still subject to the detailed studies we get for housing in the area, what the current demand is, waiting lists, et cetera, and what the price tag is. As you know, there's some pretty wild and crazy things going on with residential right now and construction costs, which quite frankly will be part of the consideration as we get into it.
And that's my question, are you over here? All right. Are you looking to get, is this all privately funded? Or are you looking to get? People bring these things all the time and they're like, oh, it all depends on if we get all this money from the government. Six weeks later, they're not.
They're gone.
Yeah.
You know, I don't want to get too much into your own business, but I'd kind of like to know what you're thinking.
It's great questions. And I would say, first of all, we've had more than one level of interest. We've had a couple of developers that said, hey, if this project is going to have the flexibility for splits, we would consider even buying, let's say, that northeast part. And we would be the developer, it would be all private money to build and manage those units. But I would also say, we're not opposed to, as the Adrian Development Group, to put our own private money into it as well and say, we're just going to build them and we'll manage them ourselves. I think no matter which way it goes, whether it's a sale of the lot and it's a different developer or it's us developing and managing them, there will still be a common area management of those roadways and the easements and accesses. In other words, that project will still be controlled and managed by a separate company, management company. In other words, you see the road and the boulevard going through. It's not our intention that would be additional roadways for the city to manage or maintain. Now, certainly, I will say, I'm not going to say we haven't asked and know some of the options. Let's talk about even some of the demo work. Could there be some grant funding that we can participate? I think the speed and the level which we can get this project off the ground and get it going, some of those things can be helpful. If they are options that are not readily available or never become available, we're prepared to go it whatever way we need to, even completely private if necessary.
Mr. Watson's concern is we've looked at probably half a dozen projects in the last couple of years for housing that were predicated on state support.
Yeah.
And they have never happened for us.
Yeah. And I think one of the things that makes this a little more feasible to do it completely private if we need to, is the land is already owned. You know, that cost is not there. Some of the development and infrastructure is already there in this property too. Not all of it. I think though, the way we've looked at it with the architect and we've got the blueprints of the existing drainage and utilities that go to that property, some of those costs can be mitigated down to a point where we can make some sense out of it. Partly, it's going to be phased. I mean, we've talked about, well, what might those phases look like? We've got some proposed outlots. We've got commitments from at least two parties that are ready to purchase and develop those outlots right away out the gate if this project is approved. That gets them some working capital. We can go into the next phases. I've got more than one broker that has retail connections that are ready to look at, well, who can we get in as a battery? Let's talk about some of the, maybe the strip retail to the north of the current Hobby Lobby Ali's building. If they can get one or two key retailers ready to go in there, that would be a site we'd want to, we'd want to implement that phase, sign contracts and begin to construct that boulevard. So I don't know that I can tell you exactly sitting here today, which part and how those phases are going to happen until we just start moving along. And that's, you could call that some of the drawbacks to the property and to the project. But on the other hand, I look at as a benefit because we've already got several pieces that are privately ready to be purchased and funded to get the project off the ground.
Mr. Taylor? I have a couple of questions. So who's doing this project? Is it the ownership of the property? Or is your group separate from the ownership and you're working together?
Great, great question. I have an ownership.
So explain to us what the, you've brought up CJ yourself.
Yep.
Adrian Mall group.
Good.
Please explain what the three different ones.
Thank you. The Adrian Development Group is the current owner of the property. I have an ownership agreement with my company with the Adrian Development Group. It's partly contingent on the approval of this project, obviously. We have an agreement with New Life Church for one of the pieces of the outlots to sell that piece to New Life Church, still maintaining the common area access and management. But that parcel then can be developed privately by the funding of New Life Church. We have one more of the outlots in the front, neighboring two twenty-three that we have, the Adrian Development Group has a purchase letter of intent. In other words, short of saying it's a purchase agreement, if the project's approved, we'll sign a purchase agreement. One of those outlots can immediately begin to be developed. I'm leaving the name of the interest of purchaser out for confidentiality reasons at this time. I, as a licensed general contractor, my company have an ownership agreement with the Adrian Development Group. We'll solidify that and we'll take the lead on doing the general contracting for the development. That can be anywhere from the road construction to the actual construction of the buildings. Some of the outlots, one of the outlots that the other owner interested party has their own developer. We sell that lot to that particular entity, they will oversee the development of their own structure and building. So there's, I hope that's laid out enough of it for you to get the idea of the nature of the relationship.
So I'd just like to say, I've been in town for twenty-five years and some of you have been here forever, like Mr. Watson. It's the first time I've ever seen green on this property.
Yep.
Well, you know, I'm looking at all the trees.
Yes, yes.
But I want to make up a point here. We were looking at a property across the street a couple, three years ago where someone wanted to put a facility inside a large building. And staff, rightfully so probably, had said, let's take a look at the parking lot, which is ugly and there's no green space. There's no, there's nothing there except lines and asphalt. So I see that you have, you know, some green here, but I think, you know, I would encourage you to look at the large parking areas and figure out some way that you can not spend a lot of money, but still break things up, have nice plantings and some trees of some sort there. You know, if you look at the new lifestyle malls, they're doing a lot of that, I think so. Well, you know that all the time. You do it every day. I mean, this is a, I once would say I'm not big on self-storage, but everybody that owns self-storage is begging the next door neighbor to buy their landslide and put more up. It's absolutely amazing. And the way you present it with an open view of it, where you can actually see, you've got lighting and everything inside, I think that's pretty exciting. This is a great step forward, I think.
I would add on to that, that I find this very, the whole concept very enticing. My primary concern relates to something that we were just discussing here, and that is to ownership and responsibility. We've had a number, a number, two or three developers contact the city in the last twenty-four, forty-eight months wanting to turn this into self-storage. Not just a little bit of it, but a big chunk of it. We weren't too enthused about that. Like I said, I'm very enthused about the concept you're showing here. I would hate to have the first part of the project be the self-storage and then nothing else happen.
Yep.
And so I guess for me to get on board with this, there would have to be some way to assure that, you know, some assurance of completion or at least of progress.
Yes, I appreciate that. I can tell you that even though the self-storage is one that we are prepared to begin developing right away.
Well, that seems like the easy one to do.
Yeah. At least the two other items that I mentioned, we'd be prepared. And quite frankly, it's good news to us to hear you are interested in moving this forward. As soon as we could get approval to begin to make splits, the New Life Church portion is ready to go. Financing ready to go, they've got a purchase agreement ready to go. Also, the one outlot that is between McDonald's.
Well, see, that's part, but
Yeah.
Don't mean to interrupt, but that's part of my concern is if these are all going, all of this is going to be individual entities.
Sure.
Do we have a single point of responsibility?
Gotcha, yep.
Well, I might, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Well, the previous owners who probably paid a fair amount for, I'm talking about the Tobani group.
Oh, a while ago, okay.
A while ago, they bought it from Sam's Zell, as I recall. They made back their money and probably doubled or tripled it by selling the outlots. And I think the only reason we haven't sold more outlots is probably whoever has owned it since then is not interested in trying to do that. But I mean, for goodness sakes, they owned Bob Evans, by the way, and they sold that to Bob Evans.
Yes.
And then we, you know, the old Aubries is there and the Hampton. And, you know, there's, if you aggressively go after this, people are going to buy these outlots, I hope.
But Don, my concern is that we do that. And again, unless there's a point of single responsibility for the project that once we sell the outlots, somebody walks away and leaves the white elephant of a mall sitting there, you know?
Well, well, that's true, but you know, it seems to me that you're not going to really sell all your outlots right away. But if you self-storage and your New Life project and some of these retail, your concept of driving in here and retail between Ali's and Dunham's is cool.
Other commissioners?
Sorry.
I mean, who is the Adrian Development Group? Who are the people? Can you tell us?
Yes, Isaac Catan, the managing partner of Adrian Development Group is on. And that is.
I mean, honestly, to be honest, it would make me feel a lot better if I find out it's ten people that are from the community than one guy and thirty people from California, New York, Florida, Ohio. I'm serious.
Yeah. No, I get it.
You know, like you said right here, you want to see it as a long time. CJ wants to see it, I want to see it. But I want to know that there's, this is a big project.
There's a commitment to it.
And as Mike said, I don't, I don't want to see you do the self-storage. I don't want to see it knock down a bunch of shit and then, excuse me, a bunch of stuff and then go, oh, we've run out of money.
Yeah.
We've got piles there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Like I said, I'm enthused about.
Yes, I love this.
But maybe, maybe there needs to be some kind of performance agreement in place to ensure some kind of timeframe and, you know, or at least the portions of it don't lie foul after just a few years.
Yeah, and I realize there can be a lot of detail and maybe Greg can help us through.
Yeah, I think some of that can be done with phasing, right? I mean, if you prescribe phases, which you could do as part of your PUD approval and you don't get too far, you know, so you get one outlot, you get the New Life parcel, but the other outlots are future phases beyond some of the more attractive aspects of.
I'm not so much concerned about the outlots as I am about the core, you know?
Well, that's right. That's so, that's so the core has to come before further outlots. You know, as Mr. Garno put out, it needs some working capital, but that, there's a limit to that. And then you attack the core before you move on to selling off all the outlots and then, you know, abandoning the remainder of it. I mean, I will point out also that the way this is oriented, with those out, those further outlots facing in, you know, there's going to be a strong motivation to have an attractive interior to the site if you're going to be able to market those outlots. I will point out for you, Mr. Garno, that when we did the splits for Ali's and Hobby Lobby, we had to do psychondo for that because there were no more land divisions available for this. So that's something you need to plan for as you go through the process. Probably going to need to use the condominium process to accomplish your splits.
Commissioners, additional comments or questions? Robert, anything from you? Mrs. Roberts? Yes. Yes, Robert and Roberts?
That's true. You can call me Mary, if that's okay. I don't, that's fine with me. I did have a question about the, would be the northeast corner. You have parking across, this would be what, Winter Street?
Yes. Yeah, there, actually, there's a little sliver that is part of the deed to the property that would accommodate some parking. Now, we showed it there only because right now it's just grass. You know, if that can be of some service to provide additional overflow parking or parking that would better accommodate, especially the residential piece, we wanted to show that we're willing to put that to use.
I think there's more than enough parking.
Believe me, we don't need to put the expense, it's not necessary, but.
More than enough parking on the site.
Well, there is right now, but if they start building out, they may not.
Yeah.
So that's interesting. I didn't realize that the mall property.
Yeah, it's an interesting deed.
Yeah.
Good observation though, too. And I think, you know, our point is if it's part of the property and it has the ability to be used for something, at least we wanted to show it. I'm also rate with you that if it's not needed, I don't need to go put a lot more money into another sea of parking.
Well, I would be concerned about, I mean, there would be pedestrians going across there and that, that's a curve and it's going down a slight hill, there'd be some issues right through there that I'd be concerned about. My second question, and I'm sure you'll figure this out, but the Arby's drive-through. Have you ever been? Have you ever been to that Arby's drive-through? It, it houses like two cars.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, there's some discussions with a number of the tenants on that side. I think you may also know the car wash, for example, currently exits directly onto the site. You know, we've got to have some discussions with those. We're, we're partially limited on how far and how much we can engage those tenants without knowing we've got a project that's supported by you and we've got some level of approvals so we can begin moving forward. But, you know, Arby's is limited to what they've got. If that land can be further developed, that's also an option for them, quite frankly. I wouldn't be opposed to having, opening up those discussions with them. What about a better accommodation for some of the existing tenants are already on site? I mean, that's a good one.
Lynn Punnett, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, but Don didn't have on his microphone and I just didn't hear what he said.
Oh.
Oh, I did not. I'm sorry. Well, everybody else heard me, Lynn. Basically.
I, I know. I'm sorry. I was hoping you'd turn it on.
That's okay. Well, you should have said something. Basically, I said that I made them aware of the possibility of a, of a brand new housing study, which would be, take place for the county, but would be reflective of all the municipalities and townships and everything. And, and the funding comes forth, that may well be done in time for them to take advantage of that as they plan this portion of the PUD.
Yes, we certainly hope that housing study gets going shortly.
Yes, we do.
And it would be of great benefit to you, Dan, and your group. And it's great to see you. I, I love this proposal. I would, I would hope that there's a way that just at least a few units in that housing development in the greater good of community could be affordable. And I'm certain that there would be accessibility, well thought out, affordability, and all the things that make up attainable housing. I'm personally very excited about this and will work really hard to get you a housing study that will support the need.
Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions for Mr. Garno or for Ms. O'Neal or just comments in general? Is there, this is not a.
Couldn't agree more.
This is not a formal public hearing, but is there anyone else in the present here tonight that wants to address the planning commission on this proposal? Madam Mayor.
I would just like to say that I'm very excited to see something that's more, that, that's just more versatile, like the, and, and thinking outside the box what this group is doing. And I'm very excited to see more housing. I will echo, because Lynn Punnett and I talk all the time, mixed income would be ideal for the housing. But just to see, you know, retail, church, self-storage, you know, the, the housing, just all of those mixed uses and really using those outlots and getting rid of just a huge parking lot and, and having more greenery. But this is very, very exciting. And my excitement is, is so huge. That's why Ian went is here from WLEN, because I was very excited about this and already telling him today about it. And so therefore he came. But I just really, I'm very excited and really look forward to this moving forward.
Thank you. Commissioners, this is not on our agenda for any action this evening, and I'm not sure that any action, formal action is warranted. Although I, it would probably be appropriate to, if it's, if we are all in some level of agreement to, to at least express that we are, that we wish to be supportive of this project. And while there's lots of details, you have to be worked out and questions in the future. We certainly would, am I speaking for everyone? Do we think that, that this would, this would be an excellent project and we would be glad to be supportive of it? Okay, thank you both. Case number 21036, a zoning exception permit for a childcare center at 1232 West Mommy Street. Is there someone here to represent that project?
I, I'm here. I'm on Zoom.
Oh, okay. Very well. Just a minute and we'll, we'll be right with you. Just to review a, the requirements for a zoning exception permit, we'll hear first from the applicant. And they can tell us whatever it is they would like in support of their application. We may ask her some questions. We'll then take comments from the public either that we received by mail or phone, or anybody in the audience that wishes to address the matter. Then we'll consider the application for the zoning exception permit. There are both general and specific criteria for this. In general, we need to consider, does the proposed use meet the specific requirements, which we'll get to in a second? Would granting the permit have an adverse effect on the environment or the value of surrounding properties? Is the proposed use compatible with adjacent and surrounding properties? And is the proposed use consistent with the city's future land use plan relative to the daycare center in, this is, I believe, Zone R1, which is permitted by zoning exception permit. The criteria there is it does not permit any dormity, dormitory facilities. And there needs to be an outdoor recreation area that is fenced. And there needs to be a minimum 1,200 square foot of an outdoor recreation area. And I believe that is it. With that said, please tell us what it is you're proposing to do at 1232 West Mommy Street. Is, is this Bridgette Dayhash, Dayharsh we have with us?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Dayharsh, please, again, very briefly, tell us what it is you're proposing to do.
Okay, thank you. I, I am proposing to open a childcare center at the location. The childcare center will start to house 60 children. And we will service children that are infants up to 12 years of age. So we will take full-time children and then schoolchildren for before and after school care and then when school is not in session. We do plan on being open on non-traditional hours. So our earliest will be 5:00 AM. And our latest will be until 9:30 PM. And we do plan on being open Monday through Saturday, which we feel will help the working families in the community who work not just a traditional nine-to-five office job. And we do plan, like I said, housing before and after school care. So we do plan on having a bus pickup and drop-off at the childcare center. And then creating a playground towards the back of the building for the children as well.
And we have a, a diagram that you provided showing a proposed fence of approximately 10,000 square foot of fence space immediately behind the building?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? We have a, a staff review of the site plan. And I believe that they were comfortable with pretty much everything that's already present there. With the exception of cleaning up the parking lot of grass and weeds and resealing and restripping the parking lot. It has been neglected for some time, it looks like.
Okay.
Did we receive any written or phone comments from the public?
No, we don't.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on this, in this particular proposal? Ms. Dayharsh, I, I presume that you are amenable to the, the work on the parking lot that, that staff has recommended?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions or discussion? If we have none, like I said, this is a zoning exception permit, does not require city commissioner approval. This is the purview of the planning commission.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Support.
From Commissioner Love, Commissioner Watson, Commissioner Love. Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Taylor, support. Roberts?
Support.
Jacobitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Leatherby?
Support.
Johnson? Watson?
Support.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. Best of luck with your, with your new business.
Thank you so much.
Is there any other business to come before us this evening? Is there anyone that wishes to address the planning commission on any other matter? Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Is there support?
Support.
All those in favor, using the case, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Christmas and New Years. We will see you in the new.